Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 12, 2021, meeting for the Planning Board of the Town of Chatham. My name is Catherine Halpern. I'm Chair of the Planning Board for the Town of Chatham. This meeting is being conducted by remote participation only. And in a few moments, I'll read you some instructions about our remote participation procedures. I will mention that this meeting is being broadcast live on Channel 18 and will also be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing. Before we continue, I will ask that everyone who's not speaking, would you kindly mute your microphones if you're connected by computer? Or if you're connected by phone, could you mute your microphones? And if everyone, with the exception of the Planning Board members, if you are connected by computer, could you kindly also disable your video? And this will help with the clarity of the broadcast. So also, I should just ask if anyone is recording the meeting. It is all right to record the meeting, but you do need to let us know. So let me go on with our remote participation information. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GLC 30A18, and the Governor's March 23, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Chatham Planning Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while it is in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410. That's 1-508-945-4410. And the conference ID number is 735-876-732. You may also join the meeting online using Microsoft Teams through the link that's on the posted agenda on the Planning Board page on the town website. Despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. And as I mentioned, we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. In the event that anyone becomes inadvertently muted, please press *6 on your phone. As I mentioned earlier, it will help with the clarity of the broadcast and clarity for everyone. If you are not speaking, meaning you're not recognized by the chair, kindly mute the microphone on your telephone or computer. And with the exception of Planning Board members, again, if you're not speaking, would you kindly disable your video on the computer? So I just wanted to go over some procedural steps. I'll begin with a roll call of all the board members to make sure that everyone's present. I will, after the discussion of the matters on the agenda by the board, we will also allow for public comment. I'll give you a few more details on this in a moment. And if you are a member of the public and wish to speak, please be recognized by the chair and then unmute your microphone and you can speak. We also ask that you would also identify yourself. Please give your name. And if you're connected by phone, give the last four digits of your phone number for identification purposes. And as I mentioned, after an agenda item has been discussed by the board, by the public body, I'll request any questions or comments from citizens and non-board members. And again, if we could always remember, especially with the remote procedure, we just need to have one person speaking at a time. You need to be recognized by the chair, and please repeat your name and last four digits of your phone number. For the Planning Board votes tonight, all votes will also be taken by roll call and will adjourn the meeting with a verbal confirmation of adjournment and will note the time of adjournment. So before we go to the next step, I just want to ask the board members if there's anyone who needs to recuse themselves from any matters on tonight's agenda. Okay, there being none, we will go to the first agenda point. We do have many, a number of people from the Airport Commission and from Cape Cod Commission, also our Town Council, joining us tonight. I think I'd like to introduce everyone just before we begin that agenda item, which is under long-range planning. But let's first go to our first two agenda items. And the first one is the minutes from the March 22, 2021 Planning Board meeting. And I'll just ask all the board members if anyone has any amendments or corrections or additions to the minutes from the March 22 meeting.
Catherine, sorry, this is Ally. Before you go, I think you need to do a roll call of the board members.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I omitted that. My apologies. So Art Spru, are you present?
Art Spru, present.
Warren Chain? Warren, I think you're unmuted.
Warren Chain, present.
Bob Wirtschaft.
Bob Wirtschaft, present.
Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, present.
Roger Griffin.
Roger Griffin, present.
And is Tom Gagin present? Has Tom joined us?
Tom Gagin, present.
Great, thank you, Tom. And this is Catherine Halpern. I'm also present. Thank you again, Ally, for the reminder. And so now let's go to our minutes for March 22. Any board members have any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Catherine? I noted in the very end, or adjourned, the motion was made by Mr. Dubus to adjourn, but there was no vote by Mr. Dubus.
Oh.
I assumed Bob would vote.
Yes, great. So that should be included.
And then that would be a 600 vote, then.
He didn't, I don't recall that anybody left early, so that, I believe that is correct. Any other corrections or additions?
Mr. Gagin, I believe, did leave early, so he did not vote.
Okay, great. Any other corrections? All right. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes with the correction offered by Arthur?
Art Spru will make that motion.
Any seconds? May I have a second to that motion?
Roger Griffin, second that.
Thank you. So let's do our roll call vote. Art Spru.
Art Spru, approve.
Warren Chain.
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Wirtschaft.
Bob Wirtschaft, approve.
Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, approve.
And Tom Gagin? Let's see, guess Tom Gagin?
Approve.
And Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern. I also approved the minutes from March 22. So next on our agenda is a request for a recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals regarding Two Oyster Drive. And this is regarding a driveway in the Conservancy District. And do I have a presenter for that matter?
Good afternoon. Thad Eldridge from East Southeast and Sam Strieber, Strieber and Associates are here.
Thank you. Please go ahead.
Ally, did you want to share the screen, or would you like me to?
I can share it unless you really want to.
So we're in the Little Beach area and the Horn cottages and the area that we affectionately call the Six Packs. Number Two Oyster Drive currently has, we'll say, two parking spaces. They're pretty narrow, and it's a, it's shell. As you can see from the aerial photo, there's quite a bit of shell on the property percentage-wise. It's not very much, because the property is rather small. If you could scroll to sheet two, please. And so here's just a colorized, the survey version of the plan. And to sheet three. So the proposal is to raise and replace the building. It will be elevated to comply with the FEMA requirements and the Building Code requirements. In doing so, there's going to be a garage put in the basement that will be the new first floor. But of course, it's unused. It's for storage and garage purposes only. As you're aware, we're here for a referral to the Zoning Board of Appeals because a special permit is required for the changes and in fact, the new driveway that's going into that garage. Although we're reducing the amount of coverage on the site, if you want to go to sheet four. This is the post-conditions plan. This will provide an additional parking space mainly in the garage. It will not change the ability for the floods to enter and receive the property. And it actually, the ultimate design reduces the amount of coverage on the property. So we hope for your positive referral.
Great, thank you. Why don't we go through the board and if anyone has any questions or comments for Thad? Art Spru?
Catherine, Art Spru here. The, the only thing that, that we're looking to make a recommendation to ZBA on is on the driveway again, is that right?
That's correct, yes.
And, and Thad, if you confirm, are you meeting the grades for the existing condition for the proposed driveway?
I'm sorry, meeting the grades?
Yeah, you're meeting existing grades. You're not raising the grade for the driveway.
Correct.
Okay, that's it. I have no other comments or questions.
Great, thank you, Arthur. Warren?
This is Warren Chain. I really have no other questions or comments either.
Bob Wirtschaft.
I have no additional questions.
Bob Dubus?
Thad, this is Bob Dubus. Listen, how wide is that driveway? Is it a single pack garage?
Yes, it is.
You don't, so, so how wide is the driveway? Is it 12 feet?
Yeah, about 10 feet.
10? You don't think they'd be better off with a little wider driveway there so they could put two standing cars outside?
No, they still have the driveway to the north that they'll use.
Okay, so that's going to stay a driveway?
It is.
All right, all right. I, I, sorry, I missed that, but that, that makes me feel a lot better. I, I think it's a great design. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Bob. Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, no questions.
And Roger Griffin? Roger, are you on mute?
No, I'm not. Roger Griffin, sorry about that. No questions or concerns.
Great, thank you. This is Catherine. I don't really have any questions. It looks pretty straightforward, and Ally, as usual, has given a nice summary. And also, as usual, we want to include in our recommendation, I will put forth that we should send a positive recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals. And we want to include the language that the driveway shall be constructed of permeable material and shall be constructed in a manner which permits the unobstructed flow of water, which is the case here. So we do need to vote. So may I have a motion to send a positive recommendation on this, on this matter to the Zoning Board of Appeals? And include the language that we usually include. May I have a motion?
This is Bob Wirtschaft.
Bob Wirtschaft moves. And do I have a second to the motion?
This is Warren Chain. I second.
All right, let's do a roll call vote. Art Spru?
Art Spru, approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Wirtschaft.
Bob Wirtschaft, approve.
Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, approve.
Tom Gagin? Tom Gagin, are you on mute?
Approve, and I'll unmute myself.
Okay, that's all right. Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, approve.
Great. And this is Catherine Halpern. I also approve that we send a positive recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals on this matter and include the language as so stated. Thank you very much, Mr. Strieber, and thank you, Thad.
Have a great evening.
Thank you. So let's move on to our next agenda item. Again, if I could remind everyone, if you're not speaking, could you kindly mute your microphone? And if, with the exception of Planning Board members, could everyone disable their video? The next item on our agenda is a long-range planning issue. And this is a discussion for the Planning Board with the Airport Commission members regarding the Chatham Municipal Airport and considerations regarding the airport in regards to our proposed rezoning of the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. So I just wanted to take a few moments to introduce this matter and to introduce some of the people who've joined us for this meeting. In reviewing this matter with Ally and members of the Airport Commission and Town Council, our Town Council, Mr. Pat Costello, it's very clear that there are many, many issues regarding the Chatham Airport. What we're doing tonight is we just want to focus on the issues that in particular pertain to the action of the Planning Board and in particular pertain to the action of the Planning Board regarding our proposed rezoning of the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. So we will be hearing a presentation that should clarify the issues that specifically relate to the Planning Board actions regarding the West Chatham Neighborhood Center rezoning. Before we begin, I'd just like to introduce some of the Airport Commission members who are joining us tonight. We have Huntley Harrison connected, who's the Chair of the Chatham Airport Commission. We also have Mike Galen and I believe Susan Wilcox, and also their consultant, Matthew Karen, who is the Director of Aviation of Gale Associates. And from the Community Development Department, we have Terry Whalen, who's the Principal Projects and Operations Administrator, and he works very closely with the Airport Commission. And also present tonight is our Town Council, Mr. Pat Costello. Also joining us are members of the Cape Cod Commission. We have Chloe Schaefer, who is the Head Planner, Elizabeth Kellen. And I'm not sure, is Martha Hevner joining us? She may also be joining us. And as you know, Martha is also a planner at the Cape Cod Commission. She's worked with us extensively, also back in 2013 and 2014 on the Route 28 Visioning Project. So we do have members of the Cape Cod Commission, members of the Airport Commission, our Town Council, Pat Costello, and Terry Whalen, Principal Projects and Operations Administrator. What our procedure will be, to keep this clear and flowing properly, is first, there'll be a presentation. I believe Terry will be doing most of the presentation. Matt may also give some points, just to clarify the issues regarding the runway protection zone and the airport approach areas, what the differences are, exactly what the FAA guidance is for those areas, where they intersect the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, et cetera. So first, we'll hear the presentation. Then I will go through the board, as we do in a roll-call manner, and see if the board has comments or questions for members of the Airport Commission and for Terry and for Mr. Costello. And then I would like to address Mr. Costello and see what his, get his opinions on what was presented and what may be the best course of action from a legal perspective in terms of implementing what the Planning Board does need to implement in terms of the airport guidance. It's called FAA Guidance vis-à-vis the West Chatham Neighborhood Center rezoning. And then after completing that, we can move to questions and comments from the public. Just due to the length of the meeting, I will ask for questions and comments from the public. If you, as a courtesy, could be brief. And also as a courtesy, if you could limit your questions and comments specifically to the matters that we discuss tonight, which are considerations of the airport in relation to the Planning Board's action in rezoning the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. So I hope that's, I hope that's clear. I want to thank the Airport Commission, Town Council. the Airport Commission, Town Council, Cape Cod Commission, everyone for joining us tonight. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Terry, I believe, will be giving the presentation. Thank you very much. Terry, I think you're on mute.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Okay.
I I am now unmuted, so again, apologies for that, but thanks, thanks to the Chair for, um, introducing our, our, our team of, um, of, um, resources that we have tonight for, you know, to have a, a good discussion on the overview that I'm going to be presenting. So I'm gonna start, um, start sharing my screen and, uh, provide an overview presentation to set the stage for discussion on um, the relationships of, um, sorry, how do I get this? There we go. Okay, so hopefully everybody can see my screen here. So, uh, as I noted, I'm going to, um, present an overview of the aviation considerations uh, in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. Um, and again, you know, it's a setup to provide information and, and context for, um, question and answers of, um, you know, the technical experts and, and commissioners, uh, we have on this, uh, call this evening. So the purpose of this meeting is to, uh, continue coordination on land use planning interests of the Airport Commission and the Planning Board. So the primary aviation considerations for land use planning, uh, in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center include the runway protection zone, airport approach zone, and the next steps for the planning board. So tonight I'm going to, uh, hit in the following five primary areas, including what is a runway protection zone or RPZ? Where is the RPZ in West Chatham? Will it change with the airport master plan update? Where is the proposed airport approach zone from the AMPU? The Airport Commission's land use planning obligations and consideration for the West Chatham Neighborhood Center zoning in relation to the RPZ. So what is a runway protection zone? So the runway protection zone is a protective two-dimensional zone or surface on the ground intended to provide an area that is free of above-ground obstructions and structures. In Chatham, this is, the RPZ is a trapezoidal ground surface area that starts 200 feet from the end of the runway, is 250 feet wide at its base, uh, from the end of the runway, extends 1,000 feet horizontally with an end width of 450 feet. This RPZ area has, um, been previously developed under previous zoning, um, and includes various structures and uses. So the primary objectives of an RPZ include promoting overall safety, protecting people and property on the ground, minimizing injury to aircraft occupants, preventing creation of hazards to flight, discouraging incompatible land uses, and noise mitigation. So the graphic I have right now is taken from the airport layout plan, which indicates the existing conditions. So our discussion this evening and, and part of the overview is concerned with, hopefully everybody can see, um, the six and the two-four. Uh, these are the, um, the ends of the runway and tonight we're going to be talking in particular about the Route Six end of the runway. Um, for some orientation, uh, this is, uh, Main Street Route 28, um, and, and George Rider Road. Um, so the RPZ, where it is, it's at the, again, the, um, southern end of, uh, Route, uh, not Route Six, runway N6, excuse me, um, and highlighted in yellow. So for some context in relation to the parcels, the red, uh, trapezoid you see or polygon, um, indicates the location of the RPZ as it's overlaying on the parcels in West Chatham. Uh, the RPZ is not proposed to change in the airport master plan update. This graphic indicates the location of the RPZ, still indicated by the red trapezoid, but has also added the general study area parcels for, uh, the West Chatham zoning efforts. So, uh, where we can see within the, uh, red polygon, you'll see intersection or overlap with some of the parcels that, um, should take into consideration the runway protection zone. The Chair mentioned the airport approach surface. So an airport approach surface is a three-dimensional surface in the airspace extending from the runway end. And in this instance, we're going to be talking about in particular to runway N6. The primary purpose of the airport approach surface is to prevent existing or proposed man-made objects, objects of natural growth or terrain from extending upward into the navigable airspace. Chatham has a general bylaw that is Chapter 100 and is entitled Airport Approach Protection. This was originally adopted in 1958. The authority, um, for this bylaw comes from, um, authority conferred under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 90. So this bylaw regulates and restricts the height of structures and objects of natural growth in the vicinity of the Chatham Municipal Airport. Its purpose is to promote the health, safety, and general welfare of pub, of the public by preventing the creation, establishment, and maintenance of airport hazards, thereby protecting the lives and property of users of the Chatham Airport and of the occupants of land in its vicinity, and preventing destruction or impairment of the airport and the public investment therein. So for some context, uh, here's actually the corresponding map to, uh, Chapter 100, which includes the, um, the airport approach zones that it references. I've just zoomed in here a little bit on, um, the West Chatham or the runway six end. And this area is essentially, uh, offset from the end of runway six, uh, by, uh, 200 feet. It's 200 foot wide at its base, extends out 10,000, um, feet horizontally and has an end, um, with a 2,250 feet. For the airport approach zone that is proposed in the airport master plan, um, some of the dimensions are consistent, uh, such as the, uh, offset from the end of the runway at 200 feet. But in, in the, um, AMPU proposal, the base width is 400 feet wide. It extends out 10,000 feet and has an end width of 3,400 feet. So again, ju-just taking through the same progression of, um, showing the RPZ location, excuse me, in relation to, uh, parcels. The blue polygon here indicates the location of the airport approach zone in West Chatham, the, excuse me, the proposed airport approach zone. And again, to give it the context with the, uh, West Chatham, uh, planning area, study planning area, uh, the, uh, magenta outlined parcels indicate those that are included in, in your study. And again, for the intersection or overlap, the area within, um, the blue polygon, that includes, um, the magenta outlines are areas, um, for discussion this evening. As I mentioned, the, um, while the RPZ is a two-dimensional surface or surface on the ground, the airport approach zone is a three-dimensional surface, so it's essentially up in the air. Um, so the, the slope of the, um, of that blue polygon that we were just looking at is, is indicated by, uh, this line here that I'm highlighting right now. So some of the key, uh, aspects of this, uh, graphic include the 200-foot offset. Here's the end of the runway to the surface. This also includes the, um, general airport elevation at 63.7 feet. And for those of you familiar with profiles or those of you not familiar with profiles, um, this, um, axis, the bottom axis, indicates, um, the, the distances from the, and it starts, uh, with station numbers, um, with the end runway end, uh, at Station Zero here, running out to, um, approximately, um, 22, 2, 2, 2,400 feet, and then you have another 100 feet here, so we're close to covering a half a mile of, of, of distance. The, um, the area here indicates the ground elevation. Um, again, these profiles tend to be a, a tad exaggerated, um, due to, um, the, uh, amount of information that's included over, uh, a very long, uh, distance. So to provide some, um, positioning, um, how this, um, kind of presents stuff on the ground, I've, I've added, uh, marked up a couple of, um, key locations, so, uh, one being the actual end of the RPZ. So when we were looking at the, um, the red, um, trapezoid, this represents the end furthest away from, uh, uh, the runway. And for some context, I've also included, um, the approximate location of the, um, the, the back portion of the, the job lot building, which is about, it's about 600 feet from the runway end. So, um, just, just for, um, some, some context of, of how this, um, lays out on the ground. What we did here as well is, is took a look, just as we're going to be talking about, about zoning, um, and created, uh, an approximation of the 30-foot building height limit. So that, um, basically taking the, um, the ground level, essentially going up 30 feet and, um, I won't call it plotting, um, we, we just, um, used, uh, graphics to elevate it, uh, 30 feet, um, approximately. So you could see that with, uh, the current zoning, uh, where a property might be located and where, um, 30-foot height limit might be on top of it. And again, this is, you know, the, the bumps in the lines are exaggerated, you know, you would not, um, see this if we had a, a large printout of, of a mile long or a half mile long. But the, um, the main thing, again, really wanted to illustrate here is that, um, you know, the predominant portion of, um, you know, not only the, um, the, the RPZ, but also, uh, within the, you know, um, heading out towards Nantucket Sound i- is well below the existing zoning keeps, um, structures out of, or keeps them from protruding into, um, the, um, the surface area. This graphic does also show probably the, um, primary concern with protrusion into this, uh, three-dimensional surface. Um, you know, now into the future is always, uh, the growth of, of vegetation or trees. So the Airport Commission, uh, the primaries and, um, one of the primary reasons we're having the discussion this evening is the, the Airport Commission has a land use, uh, planning obligations. Um, so these obligations come from, um, primarily from the Federal Aviation Administration. So for some very quick history on the airport, the, uh, Chatham Municipal Airport was established with the support of federal and state funding in 1949 and has continued to access grant funding to complete various airport safety improvement projects up to the present time. So these agreements associated with the acceptance of the federal and state funds are called grant assurances. And these are best characterized as contract, as a contractual obligation. Land use is around an airport to be planned and implemented in a way that ensures compatibility with the airport and its operations. So ensuring compatible land use near federally obligated airports is an important responsibility and an issue of federal interest. The federal jurisdiction, uh, by the FAA is limited to the airport property. And for our discussion this evening, again, you know, the southern boundary of the airport property is close to the West Chatham Planning Area. In order to meet its grant assurances, the airport is obligated to advocate for compatible land use.
I know.
So I now I'm going to transition to, um, what's going to set up the, uh, primary discussion for, um, the RPZ considerations for the West Chatham Neighborhood Center zoning efforts. So, uh, we've already talked and hopefully everybody has a, a, a general understanding of where the RPZ is, what it is. Um, and again, the RPZ is intended to provide a clear area that is free of above-ground obstructions and structures. Most land uses within an RPZ should be limited where possible, based upon the criteria outlined by the FAA in AC, which is, but is Advisory Circular 150 dash 5300, uh, dash 13. So best practices should be used when determining compatible land uses such as parking lots, roadways, and open spaces in proximity to airports, the airport's operational areas. New structures should be prohibited. So in your packages, I know, um, I believe you had at least two, um, kind of guidance documents. I'm going to hit, uh, some of the, of the primary points and, uh, again, um, planning board members might have, uh, additional questions on some of those uh, items and those P, uh, materials. So we have, again, folks who can answer those questions tonight. But I just want to highlight that, uh, compatible land use within an RPZ is generally restricted to such land uses as agricultural, golf course, and similar uses that do not involve congregations of people or construction of buildings or other improvements that may be in obstructions. While it is desirable to clear all objects from the RPZ, some uses are permitted, provided they do not attract wildlife and do not interfere with navigational aids. So our automobile parking facilities, although discouraged, may be permitted, provided the parking facilities and any associate, associated pertinences are located outside of the object-free area, which in Chatham does not extend beyond the airport property. So per FAA guidance, land uses prohibited from the RPZ include residences and places of a public assembly such as churches, schools, hospitals, office buildings, shopping centers, and other uses with similar concentrations of persons typify places of public assembly. So, um, where does this, um, uh, go? Um, there are some potential zoning considerations. Um, our, our team, um, many of the people who are, are mentioned earlier, uh, talked about some suitable mechanisms to, um, potentially formally acknowledge the RPZ in zo- in zoning. And for example, those could include overlays, special districts, incorporating the AMPU slash airport layout plan by reference, et cetera. And considering, uh, acknowledging the applicability of Chapter 100, the airport approach, approach protection of the general bylaws where pertinent and take into account if considering changes to the building structure heights. And one of the primary tools that might be, uh, considered would include, um, an overlay district. This is a district that's superimposed on one or more established zoning district and may be used to impose supplemental restrictions on uses or in these districts, uh, permit uses otherwise disallowed, or implement some form of density bonus or incentive zoning program. So in our, in the, uh, the bylaw, you know, you might be familiar with certain overlays that we have already, whether it's the Water Resource Protection District or the, uh, the, the South Chatham, uh, area. And just to, um, um, kind of, but before we transition into, uh, questions, answer, question and answers and discussion, I, I just want to point out, uh, as I previously noted, the, um, you know, basically the RPZ area, um, that we're going to be talking about this evening. Um, for those who are familiar with it, it's essentially already, um, yeah, developed. So, um, Chapter 48, uh, the Zoning Act, Section 6 in particular, uh, will have some bearings on, um, you know, the decisions on actions and what happens out there and setting expectations on, um, how, um, implementing or, or changing any of the zoning proposals, uh, will, uh, play out on the ground. So, um, the Chapter 48, Section 6 provides that a zoning bylaw shall not apply to structures or uses lawfully in existence or lawfully got begun or to a building or special permit off issued before the first publication of notice of the public hearing of such ordinance or bylaw. And again, these uses and structures are protected by this provision and are considered pre-existing non-conforming. So with that, um, I, I guess I'll turn it back to the Chair, uh, but we, we're able to, um, answer any questions. We can pull up, uh, any graphics again, uh, to, um, help with, uh, discussion. Um, so with that, I'll, I'll Um, so with that, I'll, I'll defer back to the chair and she can direct questions to me or to, uh, Pat or, or again, however you want to do that, or to Matt Karen or the Airport Commission Chair, Chairman Harrison.
Great, great. Uh, thank you, Terry.
You're welcome.
A very clear presentation and much appreciated. Um, we've con, you've condensed a lot of, um, what's the word, vague and difficult issues into some clear issues that we can deal with. Uh, before we go on to questions, uh, Terry, I'm wondering if you would be so kind as to keep one of your visuals, uh, on your screen share, and that's in particular the one where you overlay the RPZ zone overlaid to show the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. So we can be looking at that and see exactly where the RPZ zone, uh, overlays the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. And you can see that there is a particular portion of the proposed West Chatham Neighborhood Center that is within the RPZ zone, but there is also significant, uh, most of the West Chatham Neighborhood Center lies outside. Thank you, that's a good one, lies outside of the RPZ zone. So essentially, we could say that what we're considering is that plot of land where the RPZ zone overlays, uh, the West Chatham Neighborhood Center proposed boundaries. Terry, uh, Terry, could you just outline that land with your marker? Just the place where it intersects or, great. Uh, no, not the whole RPZ, just where it intersects. Yeah, just, yeah, I got it? Great. So that's, that, that's the area that we're going to have to apply alternative zoning, uh, within the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. And again, I just wanted to remind the board, uh, that Terry made a very clear distinction between the approach, uh, the airport approach area and the runway protection zone. The airport approach area is controlled, uh, under Chatham General Bylaw, um, Chapter a hundred. So in our zoning considerations, we actually don't need to be concerned with that. Uh, it was good information and important information to have, but we actually don't need to be concerned with that. That's controlled by Chapter one hundred. And then also just a reminder that for exists, as Terry mentioned, existing structures are protected under Mass General Bylaw. We do not need to demolish everything, uh, in West Chatham that's under the runway protection zone, but for the sake of the future, uh, we want to zone for something that in perpetuity can allow, uh, uh, not, you know, redevelopment or in this case non-development that provides maximum safety, uh, for the citizens of Chatham and adherence to FAA guidance. Uh, so, uh, with those repetitions, uh, I'd just like to go through the board and, and allow the board members to ask questions of Terry, or if you'd like to address your questions to members of the Airport Commission, or Mr. Costello, please also feel free to do so. Uh, so we'll start with Art Sprou.
Thank you, Catherine. When I was, uh, reading the, I think it's a second document, says runway protection zones, there's some information that was on it, starts with five fifty.
Yes.
Um, the, about the middle of the page, it says, "A sponsor may attain sufficient interest in the runway protection zones in three primary ways." What is it that the Airport Commission is, uh, seeking on, out of all three of these alternatives here? Um, I'm trying to understand their position associated with this.
Uh, Huntley, would you like to address this or Terry?
Sure, I can, I can, I can hop in here.
Sure. And, and you know the paragraph that Arthur is referring to?
No, I'm afraid I don't.
Well, why don't, why don't I read that? May I read it?
Yeah, it starts with sponsor may attain, uh, Catherine.
Yeah, sponsor may attain sufficient interest in the runway protection zones in three primary ways. One, the first and the preferred method is for the airport to purchase the approach areas in fee. Ownership in fee is preferred because it provides maximum control for the airport. And then point two, the second is through purchase of an easement or a combination of easement and zoning. And the third alternative is to rely upon adequate zoning, which should be enacted even if fee or easement ownership is in place.
Yeah, I, I would think the third item is what we're most interested in. We're certainly not going to, uh, at this point, we can't purchase the area. Uh, and the second one with regard to easements, I don't think we need that, but I do think that the, uh, proper zoning of that area and restrictions on what happens within that red trapezoid is really what we're, uh, you know, looking for. Uh, we, as, as Terry mentioned, we can only advocate for, uh, that kind of zoning, uh, in order to reduce, uh, hazards and, and increase safety for those on the ground and also in the air. But, uh, I think that's, that's the, the root, if, if you're looking for something from us, that's, uh, what it is.
Right. And this is Catherine, I think that's essentially what you're doing now, is you're meeting with the planning board and you're advocating, uh, for adequate zoning within the RPZ.
That would be correct.
All right. Um, any other comments, uh, to Arthur's question?
Yeah, there's a, there's a second part of that, and it sort of leads me into where I'm trying to go with this. Um, and the back of the second page, it says, "Where it is determined to be impractical for the airport or to acquire and plan the land uses within the entire RPZ, the RPZ land use standards have recommendation status for that portion of the RPZ not controlled by the airport owner." Um, I'm not sure if we have complete information associated with what land use standards are. What I'm interested in is, is what can we put in, what can we be allowable to do on this that would provide some components of, uh, redevelopment and, and reuse of the properties? Uh, those are significant, some of those are significant properties. Um, I, I'm, I'm interested in that part of it, and if that information can be provided to us as a board, so we can take that into consideration if we're looking at an overlay district or something like that.
All right. Um, I'm gonna ask Matt if you have comments on that or Terry.
Would that Matt Karen?
Yep, this is Matt Karen. How are you this, uh, this evening?
Good.
Good. So I see the, uh, I see the section, um, that he had pointed out, and I would just like to reserve some time to digest that and perhaps provide some recommendations based on that language.
Thank you, Matt. I guess, and I think what our question is, is where, is there an FAA document that just provides full details about what is recommended or what are recommended and not recommended uses, standard structures within the RPZ? And we should have that and town council should have it, Cape Cook Commission should have it, because that's fundamental to how we can proceed.
I agree with that. Let me, I will, uh, dig into that a little bit more and see if I can provide something for the planning board.
Great, that's terrific. Thank you. Uh, Arthur, did you have any more questions or comments?
Well, the reason why I'm leading up to that is, uh, let's, let's just take the Ocean State parcel, which is, uh, rather large, uh, it has an existing structure on there, and a portion of it is within the RPZ and a portion is not. Could a component of redevelopment of that parcel, uh, include some, uh, some aspects of what we would allow in the West Chatham, uh, Neighborhood Center zoning that is outside the RPZ and, uh, still be, uh, a supportive element to, to redevelopment on, on the other aspects of it? For example, they could repurpose or reuse the Ocean State Job Lot Building to, for some aspects of it. And then they could add, for example, a, um, a residential dwelling which is adjacent to the RPZ zone and still within the Ocean State, um, Job Lot, um, parcel. They, you, you could, a creative, uh, site developer and architect could come up with some interesting concepts on how to make that work so that the whole property isn't, uh, left fallow because of the RPZ. You see where I'm getting, uh, on this? I'm looking for opportunities for us as a planning board to still encourage certain types of, of zoning or reuse of, of buildings without, you know, essentially, um, not actually tearing down and replacing within the RPZ, but reusing since it's an existing structure.
Great, thank you, Arthur. Uh, Mr. Costello, I see that your hand is raised, and I would love to have your comments on this.
Good evening, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, a, a couple of points, just, I, hopefully going to, uh, the members' questions. The, what the FAA has, has done is pursuant to its authority under federal law, federal regulation, it has imposed certain restrictions or recommendations upon airport sponsors for obligated airports, such as Chatham. As Terry had noted, we are subject to federal regulation, um, in many ways because we are the recipient of federal funding for airport operations and so forth. With respect to RPZs, the FAA feels very strongly that the less, uh, that exists within, um, an RPZ in terms of structures or other obstructions, the better. Obviously, if they had it their way, they would insist that nothing be allowed within an RPZ. But I believe they also recognize the realities that many, uh, airport sponsors and, and the communities within which they exist have to deal with, which, you know, includes such as, at this point, existing structures or uses. How do we deal with that? Uh, the, as, as Terry had noted earlier, there were basically three approaches that the FAA recommends when it comes to securing RPZs. The first would be to, uh, purchase the, the areas outright, all property within an RPZ, uh, just purchase it or, or take it, acquire it by eminent domain, which the town has the legal authority to do. That obviously comes at a significant cost based upon the fair market value of the property that's acquired. As a secondary, less intrusive approach, they recommend that we acquire easements within these areas, which are only partial interests in the property, it's not the, the full fee interest. And thirdly, uh, it, it suggests as a sort of last alternative that we do exactly what we're discussing right now, impose zoning restrictions within the RPZ that secure the interests of the RPZ, which is to protect people and property on the ground. They clearly recommend and they implore towns to strive to adopt as stringent regulations as possible within the RPZs, yet they're not going to require that we go out and restrict any and all development or, or uses within those areas. Uh, they do have, uh, they have specified certain, what they consider to be compatible uses within the land, whi- which are, are generally non, uh, crowd-oriented, not, not uses that do not attract or, or encourage large congregations and gatherings of people. And they also suggest prohibited uses within RPZs, including residences and other places of public assembly. With regard to the existing, uh, Job Lot Parcel, for example, there is protection on that property already under Chapter forty-eight, Section Six. There are non-conforming uses and structures that will preserve their legal status with regard, in that regard. However, to the extent that there is future development within the RPZ area, uh, within, uh, that particular parcel, an overlay district or an overlay area could provide the level of protection that the FAA is looking for, in my view. Uh, we, we are certainly not in any way, shape, or form prohibiting the ongoing, um, structures and uses that exist in that property, but if further, if the parcel is large enough, which it certainly appears to be, to, to allow additional development, um, the, the restrictions imposed within the RPZ overlay area, uh, would, could be more stringent in terms of the nature of structures or uses that are allowed than the remaining portion of the parcel. I'm looking at the triangular portion of the parcel that appears to be outside of the RPZ. For example, any uses or developments in that particular area could be more expansive, uh, or more people-intensive, if you would, than those that would be located within the RPZ, uh, area. So, uh, it does require some creative thinking in terms of adopting your regulations, and that's why I think, uh, you know, an overlay district is, is probably one of the most, um, rational approaches to this, given the fact that you're gonna have, in essence, two different levels of zoning affecting properties and portions of properties, uh, within the district. So hopefully that's helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Costello. Yes, very helpful. And Mr. Harrison, I see your hand is raised. Did you want to make some comments?
Um, yeah, I did. I, I, I think, just, just a comment about that triangular area, uh, even though it's outside of the RPZ, I just personally can't imagine that there would be any, anything that would go in there other than what's there now, like the parking lot. Uh, you know, that, that RPZ area, from a pilot's point of view, that is a critical time for a pilot. And if there's, he's at low speed, he's got his gear down, if it's a retractable, uh, it's an area that if there were anything in there that could possibly distract him, it could, could be a hazard. And if there's, if there's, uh, say, a house in there and they have a, having a party in the backyard or something like that, uh, and lights are on, that, that could be very distracting, and I would, I would discourage anything going into that triangular area. Uh, and, and that, that's a personal opinion, not, certainly not a legal opinion, uh, and I would just try to avoid that at all costs.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Huntley. Uh, so Arthur, did you have any more questions? If not, I'll, I'll ask Warren.
Uh, I'm, I'm okay for now, Catherine. Certainly there's certain exploratory things I'm thinking about that I would, uh, bring up with the board in further discussions, but, uh, I think I have my basic information I was looking for right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Arthur. So Warren, uh, would you like to go ahead with questions, comments for Terry or members of the Airport Commission or Mr. Costello?
Absolutely. Um, I'm not sure to whom to address some of the questions or comments I have, some of which are just sort of to fill in my understanding for, um, where we stand and how we got here. Um, I have a question relating to one of the documents, I believe, Ally sent us, which, um, has, um, the FAA Office of Airports, um, Chat, well, in two thousand and twelve, I think the document was dated, uh, indicates that it's going to issue new guidance outlining comprehensive review process for existing land uses within an RPZ. And that was to be, that was slated for issuance in two thousand and thirteen. The question, has definitive guidance been issued by the FAA Office of Airports with respect to, uh, the process for existing land uses within an RPZ? I guess, and if not, why not, since it was slated to be issued in two thousand and thirteen?
Right. Uh, let's see, uh, Huntley, do you have a response to this or maybe Matt? Matt, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, I'll just jump in on this. There, there has not been, um, guidance. I'm not sure why additional guidance hasn't followed, but this is the, the latest interim guidance that we have right now.
Okay.
The latest guidance is, uh, almost eight years old then, all right? When was the RPZ actually established by the FAA? Has it always been there with the airport?
Uh, yeah, Matthew, do you want to go ahead with that one?
Uh, yeah, no, that's a good question. I, I don't have the answer to that, um, with me this evening. I could go back and take a look. I mean, as Terry indicated, the, the airport was established with state and federal funds, I believe it was back in nineteen forty-nine. Um, I don't know exactly when the RPZ had, had come into play, but that's something I can look into. into and report back on.
Would it have been established concurrent with the approach zones?
It's very likely that it could have been, yes.
Where I'm leading here is that the existing approach zones are covered by Chapter 11 of existing Chatham general bylaw. And they're very clear about what you can and cannot do, as well as the administrative responsibility, as well as enforcement responsibilities with respect to the approach zones. It would seem odd to me that we passed such a bylaw without any mention of a runway protection zone, if one existed at the time that bylaw was drafted and approved. But I would very much like to know when the protection zone was established. As a point of, I think, important information for me as to how we should go forward. It is, regardless of when it was established, it, in de facto, is an overlay district on the existing general zoning bylaws of the town. Before we do anything new in terms of a neighborhood center, we have zoning that covers the area within the RPZ. It is certainly not clear to me that the planning board has been given authorization or the responsibility to enforce the FAA restrictions on development within an RPZ, nor do, I think that I personally am qualified to do so. But to the extent that there is a, an obligation to administer and enforce the restrictions required by the FAA, those prohibitions and responsibilities exist today with respect to the existing zoning, I would think. And therefore, to me, the general comment is, the zoning that we would come up with for the neighborhood center would be independent of and therefore unrelated to the RPZ per se, although, as Town Council pointed out, the RPZ is, in effect, de facto, an overlay district. And for me, the real question is, who has the responsibility to administer and enforce restrictions that are within the RPZ? Because it's not clear to me that the zoning board is the place to do that, given that the expertise is all in the Airport Commission. That's, you know, just essentially a comment. Since we don't know when the RPZ was actually established, I guess my next question may be tough to answer. I was curious as to whether there have been any structures built in the RPZ since it was established. It would seem to me there are some fairly new structures within that RPZ, but certainly not all of them. And again, if there are new structures, my question was going to be, who was it who administered the, let's call it the exceptions to the requirements of the FAA within an RPZ? Any comments from, I'm not sure who to ask the question to, but...
This is Catherine, and I do see a couple of hands raised. I'm going to ask Mr. Costello if he'd like to comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To generally answer Mr. Chan's question, from my understanding, our RPZs went into effect in the early 50s, after a 1952 study that the federal government had conducted in conjunction with the Commerce Department. The, they established what were called then clear zones. They later became known as RPZs, but I believe that concept has been in effect for many years, since the early to mid 50s. And with respect to your questions on enforcement, it's an interesting one, because if, in fact, the RPZs were in effect at that point in time and development within the RPZs was affected and buildings did rise, as they apparently have, the FAA apparently didn't raise any issues with it at the time, they would be the ones who would certainly object to it if they deemed a structure or use to be incompatible with grant requirements and so forth. But the enforcement authority, as you know, for a zoning bylaw that could be promulgated either at the request or certainly after a public hearing before the planning board, would lie with the town zoning enforcement officer. Presumably, there would be, the bylaw, the overlay bylaw, what have you, would have to have clear criteria therein to establish clearly and unequivocally what would be allowed and what wouldn't, so that a layperson such as a zoning enforcement officer would be able to readily interpret them. They would certainly have the assistance of the Airport Commission in the FAA, I would venture to guess, but it would be the authority of the zoning enforcement officer to enforce that bylaw, whereas the, under the Approach Protection, Airport Approach Protection bylaw, Chapter 100, that falls within the jurisdiction of the Airport Commission to enforce.
Thank you, Mr. Costello. And Huntley, I see your hand is raised. Did you want to make a comment on this? Mr. Harrison, did you want to comment on this? I do see your hand is raised, you might be on the news.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Anyway, as Council just said, that RPZs probably go back, way back into the 50s. And a little bit of history, town history, that I'd like to share with everybody, is something that Ron Meservis told me, who, as we all know, has been around for quite a while. And that is why the current job lot is built down so low. And I don't know when that structure was originally built. When I came to Chatham, it was an A&amp;P. Prior to that, someone told me it was maybe, I think, a car dealership, I don't know. And I don't know when that was built, but what Ron told me was that the reason that structure is so low in that area is because apparently either the Airport Commission or the FAA at that time said, you cannot build a structure that will intrude into the airspace that is allotted for the aircraft to land on runway six. And so apparently what happened, according to the story he told me, the dirt was dug out and moved across the street to where the post office currently is, and all leveled out in there, so that whoever built that structure to begin with, it would be low enough, and you know that the building's only one story, could be built in that area. And apparently, it was approved and has been there since whenever. So I do think that that RPZ has been there a long, long time, and I must say that I think the elephant in the room here is that things were built that shouldn't have been, going back a long time. And either the particular boards who were in charge of overseeing that, or whether it was the Airport Commission at the time, somebody didn't say something, and these buildings, 1698, 1715, well, I know 1698's been there forever, but the other buildings, 1705, 1685, and so on, were more recently built. And apparently, you know, no one said anything at the time. And to me, that's the elephant in the room. I said in our meeting the other night, at the, when this was brought up, I said that talking about structures within the RPZ, I said, that train's left the station, so we have to deal with what we have now and properly zone this so that we don't have any further issues in that trapezoidal area. Thank you.
Thank you. This is Catherine. Thank you, Mr. Harrison. I just want to comment, as Terry mentioned, under Mass. General Law, existing, pre-existing nonconformities, existing structures are protected. So what we're considering is rezoning, potentially with an overlay district for the RPZ, that will guide future redevelopment, or in this case, non-development, to enforce, you could say, or to implement the guidance of the FAA. But as I understand it, under Mass. General Law, structures that are already existing are protected. I don't know, and this is another completely separate issue that I actually don't think is a good use of our time tonight, but if a structure was improperly put in in the past, I don't know what that means in terms of Mass. General Law. We might ask Mr. Costello to comment on that, but again, I don't think we should use too much time tonight on that. But, Mr. Costello, do you have any insight into a situation like that?
Sure, Madam Chair. The protections for pre-existing nonconforming structures or uses, you're absolutely correct, would preserve any structure that's out there right now. It was legal. The mere fact that it may have violated FAA policy, regulation, would not render it illegal, in my view, for zoning purposes under Chapter 48. It was legal under Massachusetts law, I'm sure it was built with the appropriate building permits having issued, so forth and so on. So that structure, as it exists today, is for all intents and purposes grandfather as it exists today. Any alteration, extension, or change in the structure would be subject to whatever new bylaws, including an over bylaw that could be passed by the town.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Costello. So I think, Warren, did you have any other questions or comments? If not, we can move on to Bob Wertschfter.
I had one other, and that is...
Oh, sure, go ahead.
One of the documents we were provided imposed, really, I guess, an obligation on the FAA Regional Office and the Airport District Office, and by extension, the Airport Commission, regarding removal, mitigation of risks associated with RPZs. Without getting into the weeds here, it seemed to me that the FAA is involving the Airport Commission in assessing what is appropriate within the RPZ, whether it's a, an overlay district, de facto, or legally so. And perhaps Town Council would answer or respond to whether it's appropriate to expand Chapter 100 or create a new bylaw which really covers the processes for zoning within the overlay district or just the RPZ without naming it per se. For me, the idea, the zoning, is the same within the RPZ as outside of it, as we sit here today. And if we come up with new zoning for the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, I would anticipate that it makes sense to have the zoning within the RPZ the same as outside of it. Most of the district, the neighborhood center, is outside of the RPZ. However, the RPZ trumps any of the local zoning. I don't know if the RPZ will change, it could get larger, it could disappear completely if technology changes, I don't, I have no way to know. And it does seem that the expertise on what is permitted or not, or what, whether a variance is appropriate on some future scenario, the expertise for that lies with the Airport Commission, not with the planning board. But if it is with the planning board, then I would say as a comment, we need to make sure that we have that expertise in the planning board or in staff to be able to assess proposals that may come forward within the RPZ once we have, once we have a neighborhood center bylaw. There are likely to be more, given that we're looking to increase density and create, and create a viable, livable neighborhood. The fact that we have, we have allowed of the town instruction within the RPZ that was not assessed against the restrictions, prohibitions in the FAA regulations, suggests to me that there's a soft spot here that needs to be somehow addressed, such that in the future, when the neighborhood center bylaw is enacted, that we have a way to avoid building structures which do not comply completely with the RPZ regulations.
Great.
And with that, that's my last comment. I would also say, I'm a big airport booster, so for me, the RPZ is just, it is what it is, and it trumps the zoning, whatever the zoning is, and that's exactly where we stand today with existing zoning bylaw of the town. So to me, it's sort of a separate question. It doesn't affect the zoning per se that we're talking about for the neighborhood center. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Warren. And, Mr. Costello, again, I see your hand up.
Sure, I'd like to take a crack at that question, Madam Chair. I think the essential difference between what we're discussing here today is a bylaw to address the RPZ, is that is a land use bylaw. That's a zoning bylaw, which clearly is within the prerogative under Chapter 48 of the town acting by and through the planning board and the Board of, I'm sorry, in the town meeting to adopt the bylaw. Whereas the Airport Approach Protection bylaw, Chapter 100, is a general bylaw because it addresses airspace, it addresses air traffic and activity above the ground. Chapter 48 gives exclusive jurisdiction under the Zoning Act to towns acting through the planning board with public hearings and town meeting to adopt zoning bylaws that address issues on the ground. That's why, that's, this is a relevant discussion for this board.
Thank you, thank you. And Warren, just to address, I think, a couple other points, I believe Terry mentioned in his presentation, but at the moment, there are, any changes that are considered for the Airport Master Plan Update will not change the RPZ, its location or size. So at the moment, there are no changes anticipated in the RPZ. And based on integrating Mr. Costello's comments and what we've requested of Matt, what I'm seeing is that very likely what we'll consider doing is we'll consider the West Chatham Neighborhood zoning with a RPZ overlay. And that we have requested from Matt to find a definitive document from the FAA that gives all of their preferred land uses or not recommended land uses within the RPZ, something definitive and complete that we can use to create that overlay for the RPZ. Does that make sense? I mean, that's a tentative type of plan. So let's go on to Bob Wertschfter.
Yeah, I still want to get a little bit deeper into this precedent and nonconforming uses. I guess I would point out that the biggest issue to me is that gas station that's sitting there on the corner that's right in there on the corner, that's right in the middle of the RPZ, and how did that get there? And isn't that where our focus in terms of concerns for the RPZ should, should be, should be concentrated? I mean, that clearly is fuel storage facility not, not allowed. I would also point out that we have a public road, highway project that was completed this year, in which no mention of the RPZ was brought up through that, that whole thing. So, so I think we're being, I, I note the issues that have been raised before about when things were planned and whether they, the Airport Commission and the, and the FAA were, were doing their job. But, but those, the, the gas station is clearly the one that I think would, concerns me the most. So here's my question, in terms of the, let's go back to the Joblot, and there's a, there's a triangle of, there's a portion of their building which falls within the RPZ. It's, let, let's say it's, you know, 60% or 70% of that building. Now, we can leave, we can clearly leave that building the way it is. The question I have is, to what extent can we do things that we do in other areas, where as long as the footprint remains the same amount, that we're allowed a, a little bit of leeway in moving it to another spot? Or, you know, some, some measure of, okay, we know how much square footage at that, at X height is, exists on that space within the RPZ. Is it possible for a developer to take that same quantity and move it, move it anywhere within that, that parcel, as long as it doesn't raise the height at any point above what was already there before? So I guess I'm questioning, to what extent is, is a change defined as something that would not be allowed? Is a facade change not allowed? Is a, is a, you know, anything other than, than using the building as it is? Is that what we're talking about here? So, so if somebody could answer that for me.
Yes. Mr. Costello, I'll ask you to answer that one.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's somewhat of a hypothetical question. Well, what, what 48, Section 6, and, and related bylaw, zoning bylaw provisions provide is that any increase in a non-conformity would, would require some type of zoning relief in order to be allowed. So, to, with respect to your hypothetical situations, moving the building, or increasing the height, or changing the facade would in large part depend on what the specific provisions of the bylaw that, that are adopted are. So any, any modification, change, or alteration to the structure that would create a new non-conformity under the existing bylaw would, would be prohibited? Or they would have to seek a variance or other such relief for it?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Costello. Bob, is that more clear?
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Great. So let's, Bob, did you have any other questions? I'll move on to Bob Dubis. Bob Dubis? Are you connected?
He didn't answer whether, whether he had questions or not.
Okay.
But, other than Joblot, I only see four or five parcels that would be affected by construction. Two of them are on the west side of the Marketplace Street. One of them is right outside of George Ryder Road South. There's a vacant lot there. It looks like number, around number 11 on the plane you have there. I don't understand the numbers there quite yet. I guess they're street numbers. And then the lady that lives at 52, which is, um, the first house past Joblot, she has quite a square that would be impacted if she wanted to add on. So those are the main places that I would focus, other than Joblot, to, I don't see Joblot doing any different unless we have a global economy failure, which we've already had, and they still produce quite a bit. It would just be the residentials in those areas that I'm looking at. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob Dubis. And Tom Gagin, questions, comments?
Yes, Madam Chair. I'd like to ask a question of, for clarity, from Huntley Harrison, if I could, please.
Please go ahead.
Yeah, my question was, is what I heard in his statement about the overlay district, excuse, yeah, the overlay district and the RPZ, is that he implied, at least that's what I heard, that nothing should be built in the future in the RPZ area.
Mr. Harrison-
That's my opinion.
All right. Matt, do you want to also comment on that? Huntley, if you're saying it's your opinion, is it strictly speaking the FAA recommendations or guidance?
It, it is definitely FAA recommendations and guidance that, that-
Okay.
Certain, only certain, you know, certain types of structures are allowed in there, and since we're, and that's pretty limited, from what I can gather. Matt, can you weigh in a little bit here for me?
Yeah, sure. So I was just going to kind of follow up on that, Madam Chair, and just say that this kind of gets back to that, that list of compatible uses that would make the most sense for that area. I believe there are some, and like I said, just with a little bit of time, I can pull down or call down a list that might make sense for, for future guidance.
Madam Chair, Tom Gagin? That's not answering my question. My question was directed to Mr. Harrison in a statement that he made, again implying that nothing, nothing should be built in the RPZ, and that was his opinion. I'd like to know if that in fact is what I heard.
That's what I said, yes. Yeah. I did say that.
You didn't say that.
I said, that's my opinion, that nothing should be built in there.
Thank you. I have further-
Not, notwithstanding what's already there, certainly.
I have further questions, Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes, yes, please go ahead, Tom.
First of all, I'd like to talk to Warren's points, Warren Shane's points, and reinforce a lot of his comments in terms of the obligation of the Planning Board in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. I think this board has a lot of homework to do before we can intelligently and sensitively start to address this issue of the RPZ. So again, my kudos to Warren, because I think he hit a lot of nails on the head. He could have built a building from all the pounding he did, in a way that I thought was very progressive. Having said that, it seems to me that this RPZ, this protection zone area, has a very heavy cost to the Town of Chatham. And I don't see a lot of relief being offered or given to anyone in that area as an owner for any kind of compensation for this protection that is being asked by the airport. How do these people survive in the future in terms of what's happened, or will happen to their, their buildings, their, their zoning, current use, and are the ability to do anything in the future that makes economic sense? That's a question I, I just would have the board, our board, try to address as to what we're doing. This is very serious in terms of the future economics of this center. And I also see that what we're going through here is an evolution of the airport and its uses. It is not anywhere close to what it was in its original tent, intent, even back in the 50s. There certainly is a progressive under the umbrella of safety to, to change how airplanes approach this, and the protection that they needed to be afforded by the Town of Chatham. What is happening to the airport in terms of its general use, and the products that are going in there? I mean, a very simple solution, as ludicrous as it is, is just allow airplanes to go in there, or air machinery to go in there that are helicopters. We could really reduce a lot of the RPZ. I mean, that is as ridiculous a statement as, you need to protect us from the future. We don't know what the future of the airport's going to be, if it's going to continue to evolve, to allow faster flying airplanes, airplanes that may have more passengers onboard. And it seems everybody in the ground space is paying for that. I just don't understand where the dog is and where the tail. Is the airport the tail, and where the dog? Are we the dog and the tail? There's a lot of questions that have been raised in this presentation that, as a member of the Planning Board, I find very much a need to understand before I will get involved in changing of the zoning to complement something that has to be dealt with, and is going to affect the economics of that West Chatham Neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gagin. Anyone want to respond to Mr. Gagin's concerns? I'll make a few comments, Tom. I appreciate your concerns, but, how to say this? I think we have to look at what is, what exists right now, and, and how to remedy that. In a sense, we're taking remedial measures, we're considering remedial measures for something that we could say should have been included in the zoning for the Town of, of Chatham when the zoning for the Town of Chatham was first introduced, which was sometime long after 1958. I think the airport pre-existed any protective zoning bylaw for the Town of Chatham. But you're absolutely right, that the runway protection zones, it appears, from what we can gather, that they were in existence at the time that Chatham first, first structured its zoning bylaws, and they should have been zoned for at that time. And therefore, if that had been done, those areas would be free of structures. But we're looking at the current situation where that's not the case, where structures have been built. We've heard from Town Council that those structures are legally built and legally established, and what exists, therefore, in the runway protection zone is protected under Mass General Law. And Mr. Costello will correct me if I phrase this incorrectly, but the existing structures are protected. And they become pre-existing non-conformities, in a sense. So, so just those points, and I think we've discussed those previously, and Terry also covered that in the presentation.
But, but Madam Chair, Tom Gagin?
Yes.
What we have in front of us displayed is what is currently projected as the RPZ. What did that look like back in 1952? What will it look like in 2050? Airplanes and technology are going to continue to evolve. Is the RPZ going to continue to evolve, expand? Is it going to lengthen, because planes are going to be coming in faster? Is it going to widen? We don't know what's going to happen in the future, and yet we're asked to take a look at the zoning, the underlying protection, as the Town of Chatham. So is this going to continue to evolve in the future also?
I'm going to ask Matt to comment on that, if you can, and then, then maybe, Mr. Costello, if we took action such as creating an overlay district for the RPZ, you know, how would that work? Matt, do you have any comment about the potential for the RPZ changing in the future?
Sure. So, so first and foremost, I'll just touch upon this. Like I said, I'll, I'll get back to the exact year and what that RPZ looked like when it was implemented for Chatham. But this, this particular dimensions of the RPZ as it exists has been in place for quite some time, going back several master plan iterations, including the one that we just recently completed with the Airport Commission. We've gone through, we've taken a look at the existing RPZ, we've taken a look at what the airport is intending on working with FAA flight procedures to get other instrument approaches into the airport. And the RPZ does not change in size as a result of the Airport Master Plan exercise that we've gone through. So we are not anticipating that it is going to change. Again, I can't predict the future and say, you know, what other changes may occur, or what other, you know, FAA regulations may be handed down. But there's nothing at this point in time that indicates that that RPZ would change from, from its existing size at this point in time.
Thank you. And, Mr. Costello, could you just comment? If we took the, the route that we created, perhaps zoning for the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, and then an overlay district for the RPZ? If the RPZ did change, or if the FAA guidance did, for the RPZ did change, one or the other, the dimensions or the guidance, how would that be handled vis-à-vis the overlay district?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. Given the fact that the, the purpose and intent of the RPZ protection zone, if you will, is, is likely going to remain the same generally. It's to protect persons and property on the ground. I would imagine that the initial bylaw would have a core set of criteria or limitations factored therein, that would, would apply regardless of, of some technology changes down the road. Nonetheless, should there be dramatic changes in aircraft or other technology, it would require a Town Meeting approval of an amendment, much as any amendment to your zoning bylaw currently requires, whether it be boundary modifications for the zone itself, or for the criteria within the, the overlay district itself.
Great. Great. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Costello. Tom, any other comments before we move on to Roger? Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
Further questions, more than comments?
Sure.
The RPZ area, which is two-dimensional, is that changed in the Airport Master Plan for inclement weather, in that the angle of approach for airplanes coming in with a, a different ceiling height? Is that going to allow the use of the airport in the RPZ in inclement weather, to a greater extent than it's, it's able to be used now?
Maybe Matt would be the best one. Yes, please go ahead.
Madam Chair, no, the answer to that is no.
Tom, any other questions? Are you on mute?
Madam Chair, Tom Gagin, none at this time.
Great. Thank you so much. So let's move on to Roger Griffin. Do you have questions or comments?
Well, by the time you get to me at the end of the night, a lot of questions have probably already been put there.
Yes.
And again, sort of, you know, and I'm sort of new to this, and maybe that's probably, maybe a good thing, because it may be six months, seven months. You know, it's funny, when I started with all this, I happened to be pulling out that binder everyone gave me, and it started with, like, looking for all this, because this was sort of a big meeting coming up, and I looked at the Long Range Planning Manual I saw in 2003, and it was, went on and on and on, and there were groups and groups and groups of, of organizations and reporting, you know, et cetera, et cetera. And we even had a group called the Friends of Trees. I couldn't find anything that connected the airport, 96 acres to the town. I mean, it was there, obviously, but it just was, it just makes you realize in 2003, and here it is 18 years, years ago, 18 years later, and the airport is right in the forefront. It's been there all along, but I think it really just shows us how, something that may have been a small part of Chatham, 18, things change. Things change. I also looked at West, West Chatham Neighborhood Center, and, you know, even since, you're even seeing now that, along with, with what's happening at the airport, or what, what changes might be happening at the airport, and now we're also putting a senior center, maybe it's not in the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, but heck, let's look at it. It's going to be down the, well, you know, and I'm, I have no problem with that at all, but I'm just saying, again, another change, it's sort of just, we just found ourselves there. And I think, when I heard tonight, that we're saying, well, there were things there that shouldn't have been there, and I sort of feel like- shouldn't have been there, and I sort of feel like as a planning board member, we all feel that way, know we were on the board and with the selectmen regardless. And we really, we feel bad, you know, it's not their fault that their, their properties ended up being in the wrong place at the wrong time. But at the same time, and I think someone else had made a comment about where I saw where there's a memorandum that we had on the package, where it talks about the advisory, advisory circular, and it talks about the FAA, and it says, yeah, they want to clear all objects. I mean, yeah, I believe it acknowledges there's some uses permitted, but for the most part, yeah, you remove everything, remove everything across the board. Everything's prohibited, and that was a, that was dated September 27th. But I guess the thing is, we're seeing now, and I think Tom Gagin has said it very passionately, but as a planning board, dealing with the airport, I think Warren said it best, I, I say this with all due respect, I think this is a little bit out of our pay grade to really make any, make any decisions on which way it's going to go. We're certainly not ready to be tearing down gas stations. I think this is something that even the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, if we have to hold things up for a couple, I think we need, I think we'll all have to agree, we have to get the airport situation taken care of, whichever way, whatever we're doing, we have to get it right this time. And I think right now, unfortunately, I think it's, it's found itself in the lap of the planning board. I think if it's going to, if it's going to be, if it's going to be our project, or it's going to be our, we have to really weigh in on this. I would like to see us really kind of take a deep breath, take it slow, and just get it right. That's it, so that's it.
Thank you, Roger. Ally, I do see your hand raised. Did you want to comment?
I just had a quick question for Turkney Costello, if that's okay?
Absolutely.
I know that we've discussed, you know, potentially doing an overlay in this section, and I think some of the planning board members have expressed their concern that potentially, you know, in 100 years or 50 years, whatever it is, this area might change, depending on, you know, different technology that comes along or what have you. And, but obviously, it, the RPZ is referenced in the airport master plan. Is it possible, as we're, you know, going to reference potentially the general bylaw with the airport approach in our West Chatham Neighborhood Center zoning? Is it a feasible thing that we, the planning board could do to reference the airport master plan and the RPZ in our West Chatham Neighborhood Center zoning so that we know that it, people have to refer back to the airport master plan? And could that be a way that the planning board could handle this instead of doing an overlay district?
Certainly, the, the substance of the zoning bylaw would have to stand on its own two feet, Ally. The zoning bylaw couldn't be contingent upon compliance with our...
Mr. Costello, I think you're fading out.
Okay. Sorry about that. I, I, I think the land use regulation through the zoning bylaw would have to stand on its own two feet. It would have to be independent. But there's nothing that the airport, I mean, referring to the airport approach protection bylaw, just for reference purposes, could certainly be, be accomplished. I don't see any issue with that. But I do think that the, the zoning bylaw or zoning regulations through either a base bylaw or an overlay district bylaw would have to have its own independent structure because it's enforced by a different authority, as we discussed earlier.
Thank you. Ally, did you have any other comments?
No, that was my only question. Thank you.
All right. So this is Catherine. I have a few comments and maybe a question for Mr. Costello. So my question is, I did hear you say earlier that at this point, you're, you're thinking that an overlay district might be the best way to go in order to basically implement FAA guidance for the RPZ. Right, as I understand it, an overlay district is just that, it lays over the underlying zoning. And if we did, for example, an overlay district for the RPZ right now, it would lay over the GB3 zoning that is in West Chatham, and it would, in the area that is defined by the RPZ and defined by the potential RPZ overlay district, that RPZ overlay district would supersede the underlying zoning in the same manner if we proposed new zoning for the West Chatham Neighborhood Center and also proposed a runway protection zone overlay district, which implemented the guidance of the FAA for RPZ, which maybe we can't determine, but we've asked Matt, who is the consultant for the Airport Commission from Gale Aviation, to research and find the definitive document from the FAA that defines the FAA guidance for RPZ. So if we create that overlay for the RPZ and rezone the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, it would operate in the same way. This is a question for confirmation by Mr. Costello. Would that be the case? It would basically supersede the underlying zoning?
I would prefer to use the word supplement, Madam Chair. Both zoning provisions, our schemes would apply, but certainly the overlay district would, would absolutely impose a higher level of restriction, a limitation on permissible structures and uses within that district. But notwithstanding the existence of the overlay, the underlying zoning would be the same, you know, GB3 zoning that would apply to the district as a whole. But the reason I think that an overlay concept, and let's, let's call it that for now, is attractive here is for reasons that prior board members have noted. The, the sole purpose for adopting these additional land use regulations is federal law, federal oversight of the airport that requires us to consider these types of zoning or land use restrictions. That could change over time. Rather than change your general zoning for the district, it would be, in my view, simpler to merely amend the overlay district itself to incorporate or update whatever federal restrictions may apply. But I would, those additional restrictions through the overlay would be supplemental to the underlying zoning in the area.
Thank you, Mr. Costello. So I might ask you to clarify that a little more and just, so how would we create that situation using an overlay district for the RPZ that, although we don't know, until we hear from Matt, we don't know precisely what the FAA recommendations or guidance is, but if it is as extreme as just absolutely no structures whatsoever, how would the, how would the overlay supplement the underlying zoning to, to have that result?
It would, in essence, in that particular situation, it would supersede it. But it's, it's, the two to be read conjunctively is what I was, the point I was trying to make. So if there are restrictions, to the extent, let's take an extreme extent of no building of new structures within the, the overlay district, that wouldn't in effect be the zoning for the area. Notwithstanding the fact that in the underlying district, some development or construction of structures would be allowed, you'd have, the overlay district in effect would, would become the prior, our primary zoning for the area.
All right. Great. Great. I just wanted to understand the mechanism clearly, and also I wanted the board members to understand the mechanism clearly.
Madam Chair?
Yes, I see Warren Chain has his hand up. Would you like to comment or question, have a question, Mr. Chain?
Well, listening to the other comments made so far, I had, a question occurred to me, and that is, in the event that the town wished to acquire and be a property within the RPZ, would there be any ability to use federal grants, such as others that have been given to the airport to facilitate improved and so on operations of the airport? Given that improving safety within the RPZ would seem to be a reasonably high FAA priority, if grants might be available to acquire properties, that would be very interesting to know in terms of trying to plan for the RPZ currently and in the future. Matt might have the answer to that.
I see Matthew, you have your hand up. Would you like to reply to Mr. Chain?
Yep. Thank you, Madam Chair. So the, the answer to that is yes, there are federal grants available for easement acquisitions and land acquisitions. That's just something that would need to be coordinated with both the FAA and MassDOT Aeronautics to discuss that and the airport's capital improvement program. But there are federal grants that would be available for such actions.
Great. And also, if I could just comment, I did, I do remember a phrase in the documents that we reviewed tonight that, that said, even if, in essence, the airport owns the land, proper zoning also needs to be in place. So anyway, I do remember from one of the documents we cited tonight. Tom Gagin, I do see your hand raised. Do you have a question or comment?
Oh, Tom Gagin, yes, Madam Chair. I would direct a question to Mr. Costello, if I may please.
Yes, please go ahead.
Pat, if it was an overlay district that didn't allow for building in the future, what kind of a situation legally would get, that get the town in terms of a public taking?
That's always, always a poignant question when you're dealing with regulation. The, the state of the law right now in the First Circuit is, is basically that a regulatory taking occurs when a regulation imposed by a government agency deprives a landowner of any and all beneficial use of his or her property. The language of any bylaw that restricts development or use of property certainly has to be carefully reviewed and worded in that regard. We do have broad authority under federal and state law, both, to acquire interests in real property for public safety, health, and welfare. That's the underlying purpose of these proposed bylaws. In, in the worst-case scenario, Tom, if there was, we could either, we could outright take by eminent domain any property we felt was necessary to basically restrict any and all building and use of, or we could, we could take the more calculated approach of adopting a regulation that we felt would meet any challenge of a regulatory taking. But one way or the other, the town does expose itself to some level of risk of a taking claim, no doubt.
But don't, Pat, Tom Gagin, Pat, don't we always... Thank you, Madam Chair. Pat, don't we always also expose the town to risk by a change in zoning that reduces the value of these properties within the RPZ?
As, as I noted earlier, I don't think a mere reduction in value of property that didn't deprive the owner of any and all beneficial use would, would be a compensatory taking. So, and again, we're talking hypothetically here in general terms, but each parcel has to be taken on its own merit. But generally speaking, unless the, the level of regulatory action, in essence, deprives the owner of all use of his or her property, damages wouldn't be payable by the town.
Okay. Thank you. Tom, does that answer your question?
Madam Chair, yes. Thank you, Pat, for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Warren Chain, again, I see your hand up. Did you have another question or comment, Warren? You are, there you go.
I didn't.
You were muted.
Sorry.
Okay. So Warren, you did not have a question. Tom, your hand is still up. Did you have any other questions? All right. So...
No, Madam Chair, I'm trying to find out to unraise my hand.
Okay. All right. So I think, again, I just, to, to sum up a little bit, I would just like to circle back and ask you, Pat, what your recommended course of action would be given the current situation? We've explored a lot of possibilities. So I, if you have a recommended course of action from the legal point of view, if you could summarize that for us?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, certainly, since the town is considering a rezoning of the very area of town wherein the, the runway protection zone is located, and we, we do have a lack of, of land use controls in place right now relative to the FAA recommendations and standards, it is certainly an appropriate time, I believe, for the board to consider the zoning options that we've discussed here tonight. Again, there's been reference to lack of affirmative action in the past, then, that is what it is, as they say. But I, I believe that the FAA is likely going to be strident in its staunch recommendation or insistence that the town do pursue some course of action in this regard to, to bring us within the FAA design criteria, which we're, we currently fall outside of that criteria with our current zoning bylaws. So it, it's difficult sometimes to mesh the missions or the, the roles, functions of discrete town boards, but certainly the Airport Commission has an obligation and a duty to comply with FAA design standards and the grant assurances that the town has agreed to abide by when accepting federal funds. So what the commission is doing here is reaching out to you folks who have the expertise and knowledge relative to land use regulations within the town to work conjunctively toward a mutually satisfactory resolution here. I do think that given your, your current West Chatham general study, that's ongoing and rezoning effort, now would be an ideal time to tackle this issue, which unfortunately appears to have been neglected for far too long. And, and I do think that, you know, there were several options available, but I, as I noted earlier, I do think it makes sense to me to consider an overlay district as, as the tool by which to, to implement the, the FAA recommendations and criteria. So I think you're on the right track.
Thank you, Mr. Costello. This is Catherine, and I'm just going to ask you, so then, for the areas of, particularly if we do an overlay district, we can continue to consider the rezoning of the West Chatham Neighborhood Center because the overlay district for the RPZ would supplement that zoning in such a way as to implement the guidance of the FAA for that area. Would you, how would you comment on that?
I, I agree with your approach, Madam Chair. I mean, the, the underlying zoning for the area could be altered or could be diversified by a section of, of West Chatham, if you'd like. But it, it seems to me that what, what the board will be doing, has been doing in the course of this, this effort, is looking at the, the district generally in terms of the types of properties that exist, the types of uses to which those properties are presently devoted, where you see the development and use of these properties going in the future, and you're, you're devising your zoning scheme accordingly. And I just don't think it would be prudent or sensible to basically ignore the needs that the, the airport has in that regard, given its proximity to West Chatham. I think it's an essential component of your deliberations on what is appropriate and proper use. And given the fact that the underlying purpose of zoning bylaws is pretty much the same as the regulations that the FAA has imposed here, which is to protect and preserve the health, safety, and welfare of the town, there should be some common ground between those two bodies of law that, that you, you can implement by virtue of your, your bylaws. And I think the, the overlay district, as I noted again earlier, makes, makes sense just given the fact that the, the terms and conditions thereof are going to be in large part driven by federal law and federal requirements. So it, the, having an overlay gives us some flexibility, whereas your underlying zoning for the West Chatham area can focus on the other distinct needs... for the West Chatham area can focus on the other distinct needs and, and desires of that community.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Costello. Before we go to the public, I wonder if Chloe Schaefer from the Cape Cod Commission is still connected, and I just wanted to see Chloe, if you have any comments. Chloe and her team from the Cape Cod Commission, I see Elizabeth is also connected, have been working with the board to develop the proposed zoning for the West Chatham Neighborhood Center and also using form-based code. So, Chloe, did you have comments about, or questions for anyone?
No questions at this time, but we'll certainly be taking all of this into consideration as we move forward. So, thank you.
All right. Great, thank you. All right. So, if there's no other comments from the board, or Ally, or Mr. Costello, immediately we can take public comment or questions at this time. And I do see a hand raised. Is it Paula Lofgren?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. It's Paula Lofgren. I want to thank you and all who have participated tonight in this really very important topic of conversation. I thank you all so much for sitting at the table. I have a question, a comment, and then a question. And the comment is on the statement about protection on the ground, and you'll find it on your handout, right on, under where it says 550 runway protection zone. There's a phrase that's been left out of this sentence that I would like to read. It says, "The runway protection zones are a trapezoidal area off the end of the runway that's served to enhance the protection of people and property on the ground." And it continues to say, "In the event an aircraft lands or crashes beyond the runway end." In other FAA documents, I've seen this referred to undershooting or overshooting the runway, which, to me, would, would support why they do not want to have people congregating regardless there is a building, in case there is, in case there is an aircraft accident. So, my question is, to whom does a responsibility fall to make sure that the people who have built in this RPZ understand this, and also the people who choose to have dinner at Cream and Cone, or shop at Ocean Street Blah Blah, or, or in the Rotary, that they are in a runway protection zone, a place where their FAA says there is great risk and should not be populated? And should something happen, the second part is, should something happen to an individual or group of people in the RPZ while they're, you know, going to the farmer's market or having, you know, scowl ups? So, what is the town's liability that this zone exists, but nobody knows about it? Not, is that a clear question, Madam Chair?
It was clear to me. I'm going to ask Mr. Harrison if you have a reply to that.
Madam Chair, not at this time.
All right. Mr. Costello, any comment on that, on, on that question?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
From a general liability perspective, I'd suggest our liability, our chance of liability is probably greater if we do nothing, do not adopt appropriate restrictions or limitations within the area, knowing full well that there's an active airport site nearby. Having adopted zoning bylaws or airport approach protection regulations, what have you, is certainly a, a measure undertaken by the town in good faith with the specific intent of reducing harm, damage, or liability as a result of accidents that could occur at the airport. So, I, I don't see that our liability situation is any worse off at all by adopting appropriate regulations. In fact, it may be better.
May I have, if no one else has a raised question, Madam Chair?
Yes, please go ahead.
Oh, thank you. As a summer, summer vacationer, as a resident, and having frequented that area quite often, it wasn't until I was a member of the Airport Commission that I was aware that there was a runway protection zone. So, to whom would I petition, or whom would the responsibility fall to identify that? So that people can make an educated personal decision whether or not to put themselves in, in a place where the FAA has identified as, as a risk, a risky place to be.
This is Catherine. Are you suggesting signage, something like that?
I'm not sure. I'm, I'm new to, I'm new to this part of town government, Madam Chair.
All right.
But for, for people who, we have shark signs, and we, you know, we have now the, the Rotary and the signs to slow down and all that, but there is no identification of this zone, there is no one for, for people to understand that there is a risk there. And I don't know what the answer to that question is, or to whom even to have that conversation.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for your consideration.
Yes. Yes, I, I don't have an answer personally. I don't know if Mr. Harrison or Mr. Costello, you might have an idea about something like what we do for, for the risk of sharks, what agency might be responsible for informing the public of the runway protection zone? Yes.
Sure, I can, I can take a, I can take a crack at it, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Again, it's, it's a zoning bylaw. The zoning enforcement officer of the town has enforcement authority, and the Zoning Board of Appeals is typically the, the arbiter of disputes that arise with the zoning enforcement officer. I'm not aware, and I could be wrong, but I'm not aware that any other overlay districts or zoning districts in the town have signs of demarcation noting where they begin and where they end. So, it would be somewhat of a novel approach, I think, to mark any, any overlay district here accordingly. It, it, it could be done through the town generally. I think the, the Building Inspector's Office or the Planning Board could insist upon signage as, as part of the bylaw, if it felt it was appropriate. That could be done.
Thank you, Mr. Costello. And, Mr. Harrison, did I see your hand up?
No, no, I think Council answered it fine.
Thank you so much. So, I do see Dave has a hand up. The only name I see is Dave. I, I think you're muted, Dave, and could you give your full name, please? You need to take yourself on.
Yeah, am I in now?
Yes.
I'm struggling, struggling with my screen here. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. David, David Bixby. I, I, I think, I think Mr. Gagin was, was kind of on the right track here. There's a lot of really broad issues that the town just fundamentally has not addressed here. We've had a, a Route 28 corridor study that focuses on a, a goal of having a West Chatham Community Center, Neighborhood Center, and we've, that had no mention of the airport, no consideration of the airport. We have a 20-year airport master plan that costs almost a half a million dollars with no discussion whatsoever on land use around the airport of the, there's a basic fundamental incompatibility here of two land uses. You have an airport, and you have a West Chatham Neighborhood Center that are fundamentally, in many senses, since, it, they're incompatible. The runway protection zone would gut the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. It, it makes little sense to have a West Chatham Neighborhood Center with just this empty space that protects people from crashing airplanes. I, I think that in focusing strictly on overlays, zoning overlay districts, we're kind of missing the bigger picture here, is what is it that the community is looking for? Not just what's good for the airport, but what does the town want? What do the people that live here want? I think we're, we're really kind of missing the point here in, in having these more narrow discussions. This is a big issue that's been ignored for years and years and years. I, I just, I think Gagin was on the right track when he, when he brought up some of the points. I think it's maybe time to take a step back and look at these bigger issues and get some input from what the community is looking for here. And, and my, I guess, one last, one other ish question here is more specific. What is the role of the Cape Cod Commission on this going forward? They've been involved with the Route 28 study. They were also heavily involved when the last Airport Commission, or Airport Master Plan update came out 20-plus years ago. They had public hearings on that Airport Master Plan. What is the role of the Cape Cod Commission going forward with the Airport Master Up, Master Plan Update and the West Chatham Neighborhood Center? How, what, what role are they going to play in this going forward?
This is Catherine.
This is Catherine Hatcher.
I'll make a comment. But Dave, could I ask you? Yes, because there's a lot of feedback. Thank you so much for muting your microphone. So, first, I'll just comment that the, the effort to rezone the West Chatham Neighborhood Center that the Planning Board has undertaken is basically generated by the comprehensive plan for the Town of Chatham, which, as you likely know, was passed unanimous, by unanimous vote at town meeting in 2003 by the citizens of Chatham. And it does define several, what we call neighborhood centers, South Chatham, West Chatham, the Cornfield-Croll Road, and it does give certain boundaries and defines that certain uses will be more concentrated in those neighborhood centers. I would invite you, if you haven't already, I'm sure you're familiar with the comprehensive plan of the Town of Chatham. So, our efforts to implement new zoning for the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, really just the Planning Board's responsibility and mandate to implement the Town of Chatham's comprehensive plan, which in essence is what the people of the Town of Chatham want. You know, it was voted in unanimously at town meeting some years ago, but unanimously. So, that's where that effort is. Cape Cod Commission currently is working with the Planning Board to draft that new zoning, proposed new zoning for the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, again, based on the recommendations of the comprehensive plan, based on the recommendation of the earlier visioning study, and based on a, a large amount of community outreach, again, to find out what the people of the Town of Chatham want. And any new bylaw that changes the zoning for the West Chatham Neighborhood Center will, again, need to be brought...
And need to be brought...
Annual, again, you to mute your microphone, there's a lot of feedback. It would need to, it will need to be brought before annual town meeting, as do all zoning bylaw changes. It's brought before annual town meeting and would, if it is to be enacted, it does need to be voted on by a two-thirds majority of the citizens of Chatham. So, all of that, anything that, that the Planning Board is doing vis-à-vis zoning changes is basically going to be in accord with the wishes of the citizens of the Town of Chatham. And I think I've described to you what Cape Cod's commission role is in working with us to develop those bylaw changes. As far as the Airport Master Plan is concerned, in some sense, it's a separate issue, but it impacts what we're doing, and, and that is more what we were considering tonight, is kind of the intersection of the airport considerations with the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. And I don't know, Chloe, if you wanted to comment on what the Cape Cod Commission is doing vis-à-vis West Chatham Neighborhood Center zoning in reply to Mr. Bixby's question?
Sure, I can just say, I think, I think you covered it, Catherine. I'm really here providing technical assistance to the town as, as they look to update their zoning with regards to the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, so providing that help.
Great, thank you, Chloe. So, I do see another hand raised. Elaine Gibbs, would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. With reference to the comprehensive plan in 2003, I don't think that that, the direction of that was to have any greater density or more commercial. I think those were two key points, that they wanted to keep it traditional in a more of a neighborhood environment. As you move forward, I'm, I'm glad to see the direction this is going. I, the reason why I think that this was never addressed before is because the airport was small, and it was only when the AMPU came under discussion that people started learning about runway protection zones, and it was very clear that there shouldn't be development within an RPZ. And the reason for that is because most of the crashes that take place are on takeoff and landing, and that's why they should be clear of anything where human life can be lost. And so, as you develop this, I'm not sure, having an overlay on the underlying, you know, I'm not a planning person writing bylaws, but, you know, I think it's super important that when you do that within the runway protection zone, right now, you show zones one, two, and three that appear within the RPZ that are for multifamily housing. And I think that should be absolutely prohibited. I think that that would be totally against the FAA regulations to actually do that. And my concern is if it's just a, an overlay on top of an underlying document, in five to 10 years from now, are new board members going to remember this? Is it going to be super clear within the zoning bylaw that there can be no building within the RPZ? Because I think that's going to be a problem. I think at one point, people may have known it, and then it just got ignored, and the committees came and went, and nobody thought about the Airport Commission. There was never one discussion during West Chatham Corridor roadway project with the roundabouts by the Cape Cod Commission that, hey, wait a minute, it's within the RPZ, and maybe we should not be slowing down traffic in the runway protection zone, so there can be 100 cars sitting there at any given time in traffic. So, I have concerns that within a few years, we're going to be back to square one, if the, if it's not super clear that there can't be any increased density within the RPZ. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gibbs. Mr. Costello, I, I, an idea occurred to me, and I'd just like to ask you about this, if I might, in response to Ms. Gibbs' idea. What if we simply changed the boundaries of how we defined the West Chatham Neighborhood Center, and, and in a sense, just cut out the RPZ and then created correct zoning for the RPZ, but it's a separate zoning district? And then, the West Chatham Neighborhood Center wouldn't underlie it anymore, we'd just change that boundary and cut it out? I think if we had the visual, you could see clearly what I mean.
Yeah, no, I, I know what you mean, Madam Chair. And that's absolutely a, a possibility, that, it's certainly a viable option. If you wanted to redistrict the, the area and carve out a separate sub-district, if you would, for the RPZ zone, that's, that's fine. You, you could certainly do that. If that works within the overall planning scheme, then that's, you know, as Ms. Gibbs noted, that it's less confusing, certainly, and the question's going to be whether or not you can find, yeah, a compatible boundary designation that, that suits your needs.
Yes. Okay, thank you, Mr. Costello. So, that could be an option, Elaine, that might be more clear, is, is to basically cut out and do separate zoning completely for the RPZ.
Yeah, I think that sounds great. Thank you.
All right. So, let's see, are there any other hands raised? It's a little hard for me to tell. Elaine, you still have your hand up, but I think you've, I think your comments are finished. I don't see any other hands up from the public, any board members, any questions? So, I think we've covered a lot of material. I think our action steps, I think one thing we would like to hear from Mr. Karen, if you can find a document from the FAA that really clearly and completely definitively outlines the FAA guidance, recommendations, recommended uses, prohibited uses, et cetera, for the runway protection zone. That's something we really do need to go forward. I think there's a couple of options that we've discussed with Mr. Costello. I think there's a couple of options that we've discussed with Mr. Costello. One is to do the cutout and just create completely separate zoning district for the RPZ, and then around it, consider the West Chatham Neighborhood Center rezoning. That, and the other is the overlay district, RPZ overlay district that overlays any proposed new zoning for the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. I think there is another issue that's been brought up by a couple of board members that, what's the word, may invite us to reconsider to some extent how we're rezoning the West Chatham Neighborhood Center. Just in light of the fact that the RPZ is in the vicinity, it obviously doesn't cover the entire West Chatham Neighborhood Center, but it's in the vicinity. So I think we need to ask that question and, and look again at the comprehensive plan, what it calls us to do, but also take into account that we don't know that the comprehensive plan took the RPZ into consideration when it defined the neighborhood centers and so on. So I think those are questions maybe at a future meeting, the board should discuss in greater detail. So with that being said, I'll ask Matthew to look for that document. I'm going to thank the members of the Airport Commission for being with us tonight. Also thank Chloe and the Cape Cod Commission for being with us. Mr. Costello, is that your hand being raised? Or is it Mr. Chain? I'm not sure whose hand is up.
I, I just, Madam, Madam Chair, I just raised my hand, Huntley.
Oh, this, this is Huntley. Okay, please go ahead, Huntley.
I just want to say in closing that I hope going forward, you know, that we, we come up with a viable plan that works well for the town, for the airport, and for, you know, for the, for the, for the zoning that you all are looking at for West Chatham. And we'll be more than happy to work with you on this as we go forward. And I just want to say, you know, please keep me in the loop.
Great, thank you, Mr. Harrison. And also, I'll, I think, Mr. Costello, you've given us an enormous amount of really valuable information tonight. And if upon consideration, there's anything else that you think we'll need to consider, I'll ask you to send that to us. But I think you've really clarified the legal issues. Again, I just want to clarify for the board and for the public, as I understand it, that we are not talking about creating a situation where we're going in to demolish any structures that are there. The existing structures in the RPZ are protected under master general law. And also, I think we can't, my humble opinion is, I think we can't spend too much time belaboring the past, that something wasn't done, something wasn't considered. I think we need to, right now, we need to understand it is our obligation as the zoning authority, as the board which creates zoning, now that we are aware of the situation, it actually is our obligation to create correct zoning for the RPZ, just as much as it's our mandate to implement the comprehensive plan and create zoning for the West Chatham Neighborhood Center that's in conformity with the comprehensive plan. I think based on the conversation, we should have another meeting where board members can continue to discuss some of the details of that. And also when we hear, when we receive a document from Matt Karen. And again, I see a hand up, is that you, Huntley, or is that, your hand is down now? Huntley, where, did you want to speak again?
No, Madam Chair, I, I just forgot to lower it.
All right. So I think if there's no other comments from the board or the public, I do see one hand up, but I can't identify.
Yes, Madam Chair, this is Stephen Buckley.
Stephen Buckley, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I used to work at the FAA, so I know there's a lot of jargon that gets thrown around as far as, as viators, advisory circulars and design criteria and so forth and so on. And so I would suggest in the future, just to make it clear for everybody, the public and the, the planning board and so forth, that whenever people throw out terms like that, that we could be as specific as possible. And it really comes down to requirements, which you need to do. So if FAA has requirements, you can say, do we need to do that? Or is it a recommendation? So we can understand that we don't mix them together and make it sound like, well, if it's a recommendation by FAA, that, okay, well, we don't have to do that, but they just would really like it. So I just wanted that clarification in the future. That would help the conversation. And I was also on the, I was also a member at large on the Long Range Planning Committee. And at that time, in 2003, or when we met, 2002 and so forth, yeah, there was no skydiving, and there was no Pilatus aircraft coming in, maybe an occasional Learjet or something like that. But in any event, just because it was unanimous, I think it was more because it didn't have any, we, we smoothed down all the language in it. The chairman at that time wanted to make sure that it shot through town meeting, and he got his wish. You know, unanimous, unanimous, but it was most, it wasn't because everybody agreed with everything in it, it was mostly because they didn't see anything wrong with it. So that's why it passed unanimously. Little context there. Thank you very much.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you. And I hope, again, Matthew is going to research that, a document from, or documents from the FAA that will clarify their recommendations, their guidance, prohibited use, something prohibited within the runway protection zone. So we should get more clarification on those distinctions, we expect to. So again, if there's no more comments, and I don't see any hands raised, I would ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting. Again, I want to, before we do that, though, again, just let me thank everyone for your participation, Mr. Costello, Mr. Harrison, members of the Airport Commission, Matthew, and Chloe, and her team from the Cape Cod Commission. Thank you all for joining us tonight. And can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Move to adjourn, Bob Dubus.
Thank you, Mr. Dubus. May I have a second?
Warren Chain, I second.
Thank you, Warren. Art Spru?
Art Spru, approve.
Warren Chain?
Warren Chain, approve.
Bob Wertschafter?
Bob Wertschafter, approve.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, approve.
Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, approve.
All right. Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, approve.
All right. And this is Catherine Halpern. I also approve that we adjourn the meeting. And please let's note the time as 7:32 PM. Thank you again for your participation, and have a good evening.